It's a we're gonna fall regular session back to order, right? And the meeting is being already recorded held remotely on Zoom and live streamed on RCTV or two out of three of those?
Yeah.
Live streamed and likely reported, yes.
Okay, likely reported.
Kind of unfortunately it doesn't work.
Okay. Okay. So how do you, I think the way to do this would be you you run through your self-report gun results.
Correct.
And then I was talking with Phil about how to do this and maybe going through one by one with seniority first.
Great.
Of or do we could go section by section?
Major section by section.
You want to do it that way, Ray?
Yeah, cuz I think otherwise we're just hopping and skipping and jumping and we can a little more focus if we.
Okay.
By major section.
So in other words, Greg would do section A and then we'd all talk about section A?
No, we all do vision, of which there's A and B.
Right.
Yeah, one same page.
Yep, so okay, so you'd start with vision and then we'd all talk about vision. And now you've given yourself numerical and I I that that could be something that we do as well. Or just to speak to it.
Yep, I think we speak, we we we've never agreed on a numerical.
No, we didn't.
I don't know what the.
Okay, so this voice.
Kind of two decimal places. One that logical or no two.
Two significant digits.
We seem having figures. Well, I think. Log scale or or exponential scale, I'm quite sure with straight line. I don't want to be here.
Okay, well, then I would suggest at least that we would say whether the goals have been met or not met or as that would be the minimum threshold of what we would say. And and then anything that we it's it's a verbal feedback and that if we wanted to provide. Because the one of the things that we reading through, there were some things where I was wanting more data that if we would have the opportunity to hand in a final written in at the next meeting, how would anybody feel about that? I think I think. No, yes. Okay, let's say that we.
In my vast experience.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't know.
Okay.
What's that? We can morph into it.
Let's morph into it. But it's verbal feedback, if there's if there's a need for a data follow up, then we could have the other, we could hand in something in two days if need be. Okay.
All right, okay, section A.
Yeah.
Section. Our vision, so.
We call to order.
Yeah.
We're sort of in order.
Okay. You saw my context slide, right? First half of the year, we were we were moving quick, I'll just leave it at that. The structure, vision, team, customers, platform, funding, power supply. I do want to just take a moment, slide four, let me just put it up on the screen side. As you guys know, on slide three, right, I organized this around the goals that we had agreed to back in twenty twenty four. Right, it's categories by that, and those goals that you guys remember are driven around supporting the mission, right? All right, big picture summary, right, the mission, real simple, reliable, low cost, non-carbon. Just I want to kind of set the stage, right, as you guys know from recent presentations, and again, a slide in this deck are we are, we have a very reliable network right now, right? Part of the focus is reducing vulnerabilities. Trees and wildlife, as we've talked about before, are two key causes of outages. Obviously, as we've talked about before, we have no control over storms, but we also are very quick in terms of responding to restoring. Relative to low cost, right, our average monthly bills were in the mid fleet in terms of MLPs, and we are significantly lower than the IOUs on the residential, on the commercials. We are also on the lower end of of the other MLPs and way below the IOUs. As you guys know, power supply is a key cost driver, and we actively manage that from our risk management perspective. The other element, which we don't talk about as much, but we will going forward, is our cash position, and our cash position is very strong. And if you guys remember last year, S and P did a revised rating on us, and it's double A minus, which is very, very good. We're shooting for double A, but we're double A minus right now. And then obviously, on the third element of our mission, we are at fifty five percent retirement of certificates in twenty twenty four. That's five years, it's six years ahead of the tunnelers and five percent higher, and we are from our current port power supply portfolio. And that ability to do that, you have my power supply. Are we are in very good shape through the mid twenty thirties, which is a great place to be. Again, you've heard me say before, and this is what the employees tend to believe, we are a winning team. Right, it was a tumultuous second half of the year, but there's internal calmness and internal confidence that is returned to the organization. Our external reputation reputation is still in good shape, which is very important, very, very important. We'll talk about that when we get to the legislative piece, hang on one second. And we have the RP three diamond, go ahead, Bob.
No, I just I I never thought it was in question, you know, I I there's no no point. Or I thought it was ever in in.
Um, news travels very fast, Bob.
Well.
And no, you, I mean, it, we were very, so Ed Nepa, news was traveling all over the place.
But no, this is the this.
Yeah, but we don't need that kind of talk.
Well.
All I'm.
There was no need to bring that up into that slide, but just.
Oh, no, but our external reputation is part of the reason why we have partners discussion, is part of the reason why legislature and the regulatory guys think favorably of us. But if 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 they think that we don't know how to manage our internal business, they'll run the other way blunt. I hear, right? So back in October twenty two, we set the strategic plan, right, we've revised and represented it back in September and October of last year. That vision and that mission in particular were important for the, we use them for positioning our regulatory and legislative presentations. It was part of the reason why the partners came to join us, and it was the basis of our grant submission, that's A. Also an A, right, allowing us that framework of reliable, low cost, non-carbon. It is a framework to prioritize our resources internally. It is helping the rest of the organization, not just the GM office prioritize, but the rest of the organization do it without having, without me having to make every last prioritization decision. It's part of the we're looking at both the AMI upgrade, which we'll talk about in more detail at a later time, and also the operating platform updates, which we are in the process of doing. But all of those items underneath that second A are prioritized around, and back to your point, Ray, right, land is a prerequisite to doing any sort of in territory generation. The last part B there, which ties back to the first two, we hosted a series, again, took the initiative back in the beginning of February of January of twenty twenty five. But we had a series of meetings with our state senators and representatives again in March, April and December. We also did a a small in-house presentation, that's why the tables are gone out of the the GM conference room. A combination of partners, et cetera, but this is basically setting us up that the legislature in particular will be asking them for support in the form of potentially grant dollars or earmarks specifically for the storage project and also some of the cleanup of maple meadows. Those are the key pieces of vision. Feedback.
Should we go seniority wise? Phil?
Yeah, first, I make a general comment here first.
Yep.
I'm short term here, so my some of my comments, we're looking at things that are going to be in the future when I'm not here. Okay, so I mean, others' comments should carry more weight than mine at this point, at this point. You know, I I think, you know, in all truthfulness, you know, you Greg did talk about the second half of the year was a tough year, it was a very trying year. My own personal feeling is that the board created that, quite truthfully. I speak frankly, the board created that, created those problems. You saw we had all the employees here and they they expressed their support with the general manager. You know, as far as I'm concerned, that's, you know, that's what the employee felt, and that's, you know, they were here to express that, so. You know, again, in the vision, you know, all these items that are here look fine to me. You know, I always have trouble grading, what's what's a one, what's a two, what's a three, what's a four, what's a five? You know? You know, as far as I'm concerned, all these things, all these things were met in my my standpoint, so again, limited comments at this point.
Okay, thank you, Phil, so I'll I'll go all bat second. I think the two items you had in the goals were, you know, the strategic strategic plan and engage legislators. So a lot of the you have the updating the plan and a lot of the things in the plan are, you know, do rely, as as Ray was noting on first, well, first, a lot of focus was on carbon capture fuel cells, so there's a lot of time and effort that you spent on that, and you you still have partners up there. For in this slide today, your evaluation of that's that's long since been, you know, it's been shelved, it's been voted down as 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 a feasible option for our MLD at this point. So that that hasn't happened, and I don't know what the what it means to say that form is a partner or that Aslam or that I don't know what those, what do you say, they're partners, like what you're referring to.
We're trying to do projects with them, novel projects with them.
So, yeah, so.
And on the Bloom and Carbon Quest, you know, while the board decided not to pursue, that doesn't negate the fact that a lot of positive work was done in the first half of the year to get to a point where the board said, no, thanks.
Well, I mean, you didn't have you didn't have land to do it on zoning approvals, regulatory approvals, there were many, many, none of those pieces were, it wasn't anywhere near being feasible. So, I mean, I mean, it's, I mean.
I hear the feedback.
It's just factual and that, so the land pieces are are exciting. And I think we've talked about the need for like understanding milestones and what what are the concrete points of getting from talking about these things, so like we would understand that they're going to happen as far as acquisition, and then the full business case and, you know, the failure mode analyses type things that we went through with Bloom is that we're far from having, and we we want everything to work out, but we're far, we're far from knowing what those pieces are and when they're going to happen. So it's it's it, there aren't really metrics to say how how those are going at this point, which could change in in a week or a month. So and that's on the engaging legislators, you mentioned meetings, but but meetings are meetings, but what are the specific legislative pieces that are or actions or or things that are resulting from those meetings that you would point to? I mean, just having a meeting, I mean, we have, that's great, but what is what is the a meeting?
Example would be with DEP, they gave us a a a way for us to properly clean up maple meadows where no plan had existed before, so we actually have that plan when we can execute it. So that was a successful series of meetings with DEP as an example. With the legislators.
Well, hold on, let's let's stay on that for a minute, so that's something I hadn't heard about, like that that we, but of course.
We talked about that, you know, in spring of last year, so that would be the February, March discussion, probably the March meeting.
But that that would be something, but that I'm just saying, it's not, it's not in your self review of I got.
I'm not gonna list every last thing we did, Dave, I mean, again, w- we goes. Keep going.
That's that's all, it's 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 similar to the other of not, you know, that you mentioned having meetings, but the concrete things that resulted from them, or if you say there's an agreement with DEP on land that obviously we don't own, and maybe someday we could lease it, but again, when is that lease going to be real, and then what is this DEP, you know, it's.
So there's a little question, I hear I hear your question on land. And my apologies for not providing more details relative to the results of the legislative and regulatory pieces.
Okay, so it it's just on this one. I mean, the other stuff, there's more specifics, this one, my only feedback is that there's not specifics for us to understand where these things stand or what's resulting from them. That's my feedback, so it's not really a rating because I don't have the information to provide. That's all.
Thank you.
I'll go, so again, I prefer to provide feedback, right, you get a feedback session. Right, this is this is a feedback session, right, so I'm I'm personally not interested in in a rating, I just wanted for everybody to give feedback, right, your end of your goals and 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 then or how how are you doing, I think. One of the things I, you you do talk about those meetings and we talk about grants. But what was, you know, did we get them, didn't we get them? Why didn't we get them is probably, we get them great, when we didn't get them, what's, why, why didn't we, right, was it the application? Was it the competition? Was it the, it didn't exist, you know, there was a lot of things, you know, when we we always talked about the all the money we were going to get for all a lot of projects, right, that's what killed carbon capture fuel cell, right, we we, well, I I, one of them was it just, you know, there was too many unknowns, right? And it was, there was, it was a lot of concrete, I I think we just need to make sure we attack the right projects in the vision, right? I we we talk about a a lot of the big things, but you know, I'd love to put a nuclear reactor right in the middle of Reading, it would be great. But.
Next to your house.
It's, yeah, right, no. But I think those are the types of things, we just have to stay focused on what is a doable project, right, what is what is something that's going to be concrete, that's going to be executable in a certain timeframe, so that that's my feedback on the vision.
I guess Pam now, right? Pam has a few months on Ray or.
Yep.
I I hope you guys hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
It's taking a second. Jumping into the details behind them, I I appreciate that a lot of the things on this page certainly not just you, it's a large group of folks who are working really hard on many, many different things, and I just want to express appreciation for the team who contributed to all of this work. You know, and and, you know, recognition that there's quite a variety of different things that we we set out to the goal and, you know, you're never going to hit them all, and appreciate, you know, the fact that you shared some of the activities and and work that went towards them. I'll just briefly, you know, reiterate kind of one of the points Dave made around, you know, results versus activity. Just for efficiency, I think it's most helpful if we just talk about just the specific results that, you know, were impactful to each of these areas. But again, recognize that there's a lot of work that goes into achieving those results, and sometimes, you know, work happens that that, you know, doesn't actually get a result, so we made a different decision, so that happens. Feedback, you know, we I think the vision is very, very clear, the mission is very clear to the organization. And definitely appreciate that that provides guidance to the organization's big decisions on their own, I I think, you know, we'll get into team and personnel later, you know, the more the team can self-direct and drive their activities and their results towards that mission and mission. But, you know, I I'd like to continue to see the organizations move in that direction, so that, you know, you you aren't in every detail of what's happening or every decision. You know, so the the focus can be on the strategy and the leadership of the organization, so. That I, that's what I, that's all I have to say in terms of the.
Thank you, Pam, very helpful, thank you.
Being the junior member of the organization, I think as a topic, vision and strategic vision, I think you do a very good job setting that reliable, low cost, no carbon, I think that's every third sentence that comes out of your mouth, you spout that, but it does set the tone for everyone to understand, and in territory generation is kind of another mantra to that, that also kind of sets where we're going, so in terms of I don't think anyone's confused that those are, those are the overall things that we're trying to do. Within that, I I generally agree that the systems have been reliable, getting the trees cut certainly is part of that. Performance is generally good. I do. Power supply is a key cost driver, agreed, and is actively risk managed. We we had a discussion this year about when we had low demand and high power purchase. And I'm still not clear that we actively manage that, I'm not sure there's a strategy, but that was a an issue that came up and regardless of how we arrived at that, the point is that that that's a going to be a phenomenon that you have when you get independent supply and independent demand, there's going to be backs and forth, and sometimes it's going to be this, and sometimes it's going to be this. But at least I'm not clear that there's is an actively an active strategy managing that. If if there is, I I I haven't, I don't quite understand, stand it. Does it, I mean, I know on the other end, when there's high demand and low supply, we have systems in place to try to pull that back. Certainly putting more batteries into the system is is a way to do that, sending emails out, so so on on the on the high demand side, we have some things in place, it's it's on the low demand side and high supply side that I'm not clear where where is where we want to be on that. I think, yay, we're we're at the fifty five percent goal. But it that's always going to be a pursuit and beyond the twenty thirties, we still still need to plan for that. I think only in the I think the lesson in the carbon capture fuel cell for me is that while I get that that was a pursuit for in territory generation and the options are few, so that was the more likely of the of the options, I think. What became successful was the partnership with the Board of Commissioners and CAC to have that subcommittee engage with you and begin to set up a risk assessment methodology where we could understand what things we did not have in place, ultimately, we made a decision not to go that way because we found too many things not in. We didn't have the land, we didn't have the permits, there were things that came up that made that not viable, so my my lesson or instruction going forward is as we have these larger projects, let's look to create more communication, create more subcommittees. Bring Pam or or whatever skill set, we have a great skill set on the board here, so. And, you know, and same with the CAC, we've got great people in the CAC. Let's bring.
See it.
Create that team, let's let's have them help guide that those projects, make them successful. Early so that we can avoid spending a lot of effort and then finding out that we are where we need to be. Our MLD on lands, I know we're putting a lot of priority there, I've also said we also, we don't need land, we need area. And I'd like to see more in the solar solar choice, solar residential options. But again, that's just my feedback that I'd like to see more in that area, but other than that, my my feedback on that topic.
Okay.
Team, excuse me. Slide seventeen. So we had C, D, E, F and G. So obviously, in the case of recruiting and engaging several key team members, you can see a list here, operations director in January, HR director in March. We hired the assistant director in March of IRD and then promoted her to director in August. We promoted an internal candidate to be the engineering assistant director with a plan to make that individual the director likely in the twenty twenty five timeframe. The IRD team, as you guys know, was kind of decimated is probably not the right word, but it imploded, so we in the second half of the year have renewed, rebuilt it, almost fully staffed. It's a good, solid team with good leadership. We decided to pause the intern co-op program, so back to the idea of let's not do too many things. But we're not going to expand that right now. We initiated, again, part of that team was the contracts, that was the E element of it. And so that's in process. You'll see in the goals, the updated goals and the package that goes out tomorrow, we can talk about on Wednesday. The goal is to get that done in the first half of the year, part of that is driven by the union responses. We continued, we continue refinement of the work schedule, that's the four by tens, we made some additional refinements to it back in the summer, the program's working better. And then we pushed the testing of the semi annual review into twenty twenty five. Our focus is to get the regular annual reviews done, and we're already in the process of doing those for the twenty twenty four year in the first two months of this year, let's just back to a regular schedule. Well, that's the big picture on team and personnel, feedback please.
All right, so first off, again, general, some general comments, you've seen, we had the meeting with the employees and you saw the support they had for the general manager. We've heard from the IRD head about the stat, the condition of that division and what she's done to train it out at this point with the training. What's Peter's last name?
Price.
What?
Price.
What, Peter?
Price.
Price, yeah. Peter Price. The time he appeared in front of this board, I must tell you, it just absolutely was amazing. This is a man who, and Peter, if you if you're listening, I'm sorry. Caused a lot of trouble in the past, the best way to put it. Appearing in front of this board, he was like a new man when he appeared in front of this board. I I, you know, I thought to myself, is this the same guy? So I think, you know, the transformation that Greg did with that particular employee was just amazing. Absolutely amazing. So that's what I had to say, okay?
Okay, uh, thank you, Phil. So going through, you had leadership team, broadened co-op program, negotiate contracts and implement new work schedule. I think I mean, there has been a lot of turnover, I think, kind of back where we were about a year ago, so.
Yeah, first half of the year.
Yeah, exactly. Broadened co-op program, so there may be value in that to create, you know, a pipeline, right, you can and it's shelved, so I you had your reasons for doing it. I don't know why it was a goal and then shelving it, but.
Yeah. The goal was to try and get younger people into the program.
Yep.
And we were able to do that with full-time hires. The idea is we still ran a program this past year. The point is, we didn't bring it into the engineering group yet, again, just trying not to do too many things simultaneously, right?
So the big, the big one here is the new work schedule and what that did to planned overtime, which was something that has come up repeatedly, and we mentioned very, you know, very clearly over the summer. And again, looking at the numbers, the planned planned OT, which is not storms, not outages, not trees, in twenty twenty two was seven hundred and fifty, from your number is seven hundred and fifty thousand, of which four hundred and sixty thousand was lying through. And that went up to one point five oh five million in twenty twenty three, of which six sixty three was lying through. And then this year, it's doubled in two years, it's now one point five million, of which more than one million is lying through, it's like, and then supervisors has also doubled. The OT is up five or six hundred thousand dollars and it's.
It's come out from twenty twenty three.
From twenty twenty two to twenty twenty, so twenty twenty two, when you took over as interim, you became full-time GM in, but end of, well, January one, twenty twenty three. So twenty twenty four, and it goes back to the MOU, we it it is apparent, and you can dispute this if you want, that the implementation of that schedule, the the Friday line contractors and then guys covering those with the OT shifts has cost our multi something on the order of of hundreds of thousands of dollars of OT. And this is something that I think Bob has mentioned many times, warned you about before you did it. It was clear this was happening throughout the year, we called it, we called out in summer that this was happening and wanted it addressed, and I don't, you could tell us whether you have addressed it. But, you know, the the OT surging five to six hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. And it's it's ratepayers are covering this, and it's because of your management decisions. Please feel free to disagree with that statement.
Yeah, I think a couple of things that are in the mix is what those numbers don't, aren't normalized for is the headcount of the line crew in particular, and also the annual rate changes that are built into the contract, also in the existing contract.
That would be a piece of it, fair enough.
No, yeah.
And they do go up a little bit every year for that reason, but the doubling in two years is totally out of the norm.
I don't think it's doubling, but that's a different.
In two years.
Yeah, okay. We should go back and double check the numbers, but the point being that one of the key results of that is that we have a lot of work that has to be done with our network. And we have three mechanisms with which to get that, we have four things we can do, we can defer the work. But if we want to get the work done, we can either hire more full-time people, we can and or hire subcontractors. We can, and or hire subcontractors, more subcontractors, which we do have, we've actually worked that down. Or we can provide overtime to additional employees. Our view is that we are fully staffed in the line crew right now. Um, and have been in the year twenty twenty-four. And currently, in our current structure, the overtime is the least expensive way to get the work done. The benefit of getting the work done is to improve our reliability, which we have done significantly. We've basically improved by a factor of two, our reliability metrics. Right, and the other element is, we all know from what happened in Hawaii in twenty-three, Northern California in twenty twenty-one, and most recently in Southern California, is we do not want to be the source of any sort of major events. So we are really focused on the safety of the network and the reliability of the network. And in both cases, you can think of the additional cost as being a benefit to the customers and insurance.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it would be interesting to have you provide data to support what you just said as.
The data is in the slides.
But that the extra a half a million in overtime produced is the, is why our system is reliable.
It's a piece of it.
Okay.
Right, and I think you and I both agreed that the other element is headcount, and the other element is the existing contract, and the other element is the rate change, which are all contractually done.
When we brought this up in the summer and what, how the scheduling that you implemented seemed to be causing it, did you take any action then, or have you taken any action recently on contract labor, for example?
Uh, yes, on, on subcontract labor?
Well, on, on like the, the, the Friday, you know, doing these, uh, what is it, power line contractors coming in on Fridays. Bob could speak to this more authoritatively than I could, but.
So in the contract that's been in place at least two cycles, um, the line crew, um, have guaranteed um, overtime of eight hours each week, that there's at least one subcontractor on the premise. And so we have reduced the number of subcontractors, but we haven't brought it to zero, we're in the process of doing that right now.
So now you're taking action to.
No, no, we, we, uh, we've been doing several things in terms of better managing the overtime hours, um, going back before August of last year. And those are actually listed in the other slides that we will keep an executive session until after we finish the union contract. Um, but, but I, but I hear the feedback that, um, so I just, I just mute the fact that it's, um, that it's just a net negative to our customer base, I would dispute that.
Well, I mean, it, it's just a high, a high cost, high OT costs from a scheduling regime that you implemented. So.
I, I was the one that initiated the four, four teams, that is correct.
So that, that to me is a big, that's a, a significant problem, and also that it didn't seem like there was a response to it over the summer. Um, but maybe as you say now, that you're doing some things now, but, uh, this is something you could follow up on later if you wanted to, but I'm, that's, that's. Okay, also, the last piece you had under team personnel was semi-annual reviews, that you would implement semi-annual reviews. And then you said you didn't implement that.
That's correct.
Okay, so those would have value, you know, to help people grow and get feedback and all that, but then if it's a goal to do it, then why, why, why didn't you do it?
Well, I think Phil spoke to a little bit of that issue associated with the tumultuous nature of.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, well.
Um, you would think, one of the things that, that, uh, I think, uh, we did have a significant turnover, right, and, and, and I'm hoping that's stopped. You know, just, but, but that tumultuousness in turnover led to that tumultuousness. Um, and, and that's something that, that it's very difficult, right, when, when people are leaving or in organization. And I think that was one of the sparks, right, you want to talk, you know, if we're going to, that, that, that definitely helps, helps them, and that's definitely something that, that we need to, seems like it's calm, calmed down, you know, but I, I, I just that's a huge turnover, I mean, at one point, we talked about, I think upwards of almost twenty out of a eighty person, roughly eighty person organization, that, that was a big number, right? But that said, it seemed we moved on from that. You know, uh, just, one, one of the things that, um, your role is, as, as you go into the negotiations is, as the GM, you need to be the, the buck stops with you, you know, it, it, it's something that, you know, um, you have to be the leader and sometimes that's a difficult position. And that means you have to say no and you have to offer, you know, different, differing points of view. I, I think that that, that's something that, that your, your role demands out of you, and I think that that's something that's going to be very, very important, um, coming up. That's, uh, you know, and as, um, we've, we, you know, we've gone through, um, certain things, I, 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 you know, we did have a co-op program. Uh, I'd like to see, at least if you're going to do some kind of summer internships, if that's, to, to maintain that, you know, to bring in some students as, as they come in, I think that's beneficial for the students as much as it is for for, for, for reading light, you know, you're, you're there to give them experience, not so much hire them, change the focus of, of what that, that goal is, um, and, and to give them, uh, you know, like you said, an, an experience in, in the different aspects of the business.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Pam?
Yep, uh, my comments relatively short here, um, you know, from my perspective, this is the most important category, uh, because, you know, as, as leaders of the organization, you know, doing this well means you're kind of a force multiplier for, everybody does their job well because they're engaged and they have, uh, clarity on their objectives. Uh, and they're supported, and so, you know, the, the, the one piece I would say is I think there are certainly a few things that, that got off track for, you know, you know, rehashing the reasons or, or explanations. Um, you know, I would love to see a free focus on, you know, when we tell New York, we're going to be something around performance reviews or co-op programs or, you know, contract negotiations, whatever it might be, um, that, that we, we do are about to stick to that, um, within this category in particular, uh, but appreciate all of the, uh, effort that goes into leading an organization of eighty-five plus people, um, and, you know, all of the, the details without a tail.
Thank you, Pam. Greg?
Um, yeah, me, um. I think we've come through a difficult period, and so negotiation of mutual benefit union contracts, that's ongoing, transition to win the work schedule. Hopefully that'll come out of the, uh, contracts too, and, and, um, we've got new teams, we've got a new IR, IRD manager, and for all that I've been told, uh, she's doing well, and I met her and fine with me, but I have, I mean, I haven't seen her work with her staff, I mean, that's, that might, that might really be my job, but, um, and, and filled other roles. Um, but we didn't, while we got to a good place now, I s- feel like that was a big issue, and I don't rate this very highly in terms of how we got through that. Um, and I don't want to rehash it all, but I, I want to see that people are being trained, I want to see that there's community effective communication about what their expectation is. I want there to be a pathway for growth, that people feel like there's a pathway for them. I, I want to understand that those three things are the types of things the general manager and HR is supportive of and, and, and messaging back to the organization that you know what you're doing, this is what I expect of you, and this is your, your pathway forward. The feedback that I received, interns were lost, people didn't know what they were doing. Um, even interns that came back ended up getting fired. I, it, it was, it was not good, it was a function of leadership. Um, and so I'm, I'm hope we're through it. Um, but as far as rating you on this, this, this was not good. Um, I hope we don't anything like requesting staff to write letters of support again, that was, I don't know where that came from, or where that is. That should, good, well, that, that, yeah, that, that should.
I was with you guys in Napa.
Well, that, that was awful, that we shouldn't be asking staff to do that. And, and those that reacted negatively aren't here, which is not a good correlation.
Either category.
Oh, that was awful, let's not do that again. But we're, we're in a good place now.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, uh, I, well, before we move on, I just remember that last point. Greg, I think it, it's important for you to sometimes take ownership and responsibility for things, and when you're running the organization and there's a memo left all over the office and in the cafeteria with our personal email addresses, recruiting employees to come and say positive things about you. And you're saying, oh, I didn't know about it, it sat there for a week or two. And, and, and you didn't put a stop to it, and you, and you, and as if, oh, you don't have control over that, I mean, it's just a little bit, sometimes you can take responsibility for things and think, yeah, maybe that wasn't, you know, but you, 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 to sit there and say, oh, as if you have nothing to do with it, is just a little bit acute, okay? Or that you don't have any, or that you have no control, excuse me, that you have no ability to like, say, hey, that's not cool people. Um, you know, come on. So, you're the general manager, goes back to what Bob said of, you know, the buck stops with you on what's going on in your office, okay? So I'm, I'm just backing up what Ray just said. So let's go on to the next topic, please.
Customers. So, again, the organization of these big categories are, you know, the vision of where we're going, the team, how, you know, the tools to get it done, the team to get it done, and then the customers, those are the people that we serve. Ratepayers, new businesses and towns. So as you guys saw there, expand the weatherization program, we basically streamlined the weatherization program, right? We looked at expanding it as a standalone program and we deferred that, we decided not to pursue that. Um, we've talked about that in a couple of sessions in the middle of the year. Uh, we did initiate and negotiated and we're about to, um, announce in February, uh, another option, another, uh, to the rebate, which is basically a loan program. We borrowed some of the ideas from Mass Save, again, we'll learn from other people. Um, but again, back to the idea of trying to make weatherization, um, a, uh, more affordable depending upon your individual situation, that's what we've tried to do. Um, we are preparing for the broader TOU rollout, we've talked about this for two years. Um, the MDM program is a piece of it, and then the AMI program. So on the AMI program, we went through a very extensive RFP process last year, we selected an AMI vendor. Um, again, it's a prerequisite for the TOU, um, our intention is to get that, um, AMI, we're finishing contract negotiations as we speak. Our goal is to get that signed in the next week and a half, two weeks, uh, it's been extensive, um, discussion of making sure that we properly protect the RMLD. We have a good partner, um, we believe, who is accommodating our requests. Um, and our intention and will continue as Nick did a presentation, um, back in December. Our goal is to get the, and you'll see that in the goals, to get the first phase of that done in this year, and then get the full rollout done in twenty twenty-six. There are different strategies in terms of doing AMI, our goal is to do it quickly rather than extend it out over a long period of time. Um, the, again, we'll take these, I, I spent across two pages because there's a lot of stuff in here. Um, we started incremental changes to rmld.com, um, there was a period in time where we did not have somebody in marketing or marketing communications. Um, but we did revise the communication strategy and plan in terms of how we're going to do better external communications. That's why we created the new marketing manager role, we successfully recruited, recruited somebody in that position. Um, as part of the prerequisite of doing the, um, website update and the broader communication, um, is a logo update, so we've made some progress on that, I'll report to that in the next few months. Um, we refined the newsletters. We were doing, uh, again, taking ownership, Phil, and, um, Dave and Bob. Um, we typically were trying to do four webinars a year, uh, we did not achieve that last year, those were very helpful in terms of part of our marketing communication program. Uh, we did run podcasts through the first three quarters of the year, and we did a lot of communicate, uh, uh, community engagement. Um, we have not restarted the podcast program, again, trying to prioritize things. Um, in terms of going to slide nine, same category, right, new customers, um, we constantly are trying to recruit new customers. Um, there's a hybrid den electricalizer company that's very interested in coming to our space, into our territory. Part of the bit, part of the interest is a combination of the price of our power supply, the reliability of our power supply, and the renewable nature or the green nature of our power supply. Um, there's also continuing discussions with small-scale data centers, and that has actually ramped up even more aggressively in the past few weeks. Um, partially, um, not completely done, but we were trying to get the outage map testing done last year. Um, there's some software issues that we're resolving, again, as a team. Uh, and the customer portal, the customer portal will release, um, literally any day now. But the outage map we are hoping to have in place by the end of last year, it's not yet completely ready to go. Um, relative to, um, the town leadership, item M. Um, one of the things, unique things that we're doing, again, there's a new town manager in the town of Wilmington. Um, one of the key topics that we're working on there, again, going back to some specifics, was the co-location of a new fire substation uh, on the Andover Street property, um, North Reading, we actually have some momentum and interest relative to the land acquisition that we talked about earlier. Um, in Lynnfield, um, we've got a new, uh, a small five hundred KW mobile battery system going into Station Three, uh, we were successfully in getting approval that land lease item with the Lynnfield Water Department, um, that was, uh, Phil and I were able to get that done in May, again, a lot of work ahead of time, it's a team effort. Um, Reading, we talked about a variety of different solar PV opportunities, uh, we provided green community support. We provided coordination and support with the town of Reading on Ash Street, the campus development, so those are just some examples of the stuff we're doing with town leadership. We have a very good relationship with all four towns right now. And then in terms of new efficiency programs, right, we rolled out the Drive EV and we also rolled out the Connected Homes program. We did that in the last, uh, two quarters, the second half of twenty twenty four. Those are, those are the main categories of the customer section, the customer so, focus section, those people who we are serving. And we're serving not just ratepayers, but the businesses and the towns themselves. Feedback, please.
Okay, so the first thing I got, I got the, uh, this letter from Rebecca Lieberman.
Yeah.
If you're aware of.
Yep.
That, that you should be, you know, you, I recommend that you take, that you look into it and take that whatever.
We need to finish taking action, so some of the things that she mentioned were in process, part of it is the email stuff, that's the key piece.
Right.
So, we'll be releasing probably the, so the email request on that, um, we're hoping to get that done by the end of this, this month.
Yeah.
It'll be halfway through February realistically.
Yeah, so a few things, I mean, I hate to see you change the logo, to be honest with you, you know, I like that logo. It was put in place many years ago when I was first on the board, so. Um, I like.
That was when, when, Phil?
It was nineteen eighty. It was probably nineteen eighty-eight when that changed.
Yeah.
But that came off, it was supposed to be a stone tablet, right?
No, the, you know.
There's a theme, Phil, so.
Was basically that, that what the town CEO was, was basically the old logo. And all said underneath it was Reading as a light department.
Yeah.
You know, which, which is one of the points that, you know, some of the points are, I'm concerned about the data centers.
Yeah.
I've heard a lot of reports about data centers and the amount, the amount of power they're going to need. Um, and whether or not, uh, you know, there'll be, there'll be some capacity to handle those data centers. So I think we need to, you know, think about that in terms of the data centers on that. Um, I've also seen, uh, with the present administration that that, that there will be some sort of slowdown in electrification.
Yeah, probably, well.
At this.
Federally, yeah, the question, yeah, we're looking at that, that's a, that's exactly the right question, we're trying to, the, the federal and state legislation will drive and regulatory will drive that, grasping exactly the same question.
There's things like right now that the, the executive order related to offshore wind farms, and, you know.
That's a supply issue, not electrification issue.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's, that's, that's a serious issue.
Yeah.
Agreed.
But if we have enough, to apply enough supply to get to the electrification, I would imagine too. The only thing that I, and I've, I've said it before and I'll say it again.
Okay.
Many people think this is Reading's Light Department. This is not Reading's Light Department. And it cannot be treated as if the town of Reading owns this. This belongs to the out, to the ratepayers department, who this department belongs to. And you must always be aware of the outside towns. Because there's more, there's more people, there's more.
Low.
Low.
Revenue.
Uh, revenue that's outside of the town of Reading than there is inside of the town.
Seventy percent outside.
So must, the department must always be run from the customer side for the rate payer. At this point, so.
Good reminder.
That's just a reminder that, you know, I lived through the, the town of Wilmington pulling out, taking two votes, uh, pulling out and the 20-year agreement that we came about with. And that was, there was really some really consequences, big consequences on that, had that ever gone through. That everybody would end up paying higher rates, both here in Reading, uh, you know, in Wilmington, North Reading and the half of Lynnfield that we have. So, and hopefully that agreement stays around after long I'm gone, I hope.
Hopefully.
Okay?
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Phil, good reminder on the, yeah.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah.
Good day. So on my, my part, yeah. So first of all, AMI, it's a great, uh, it's great that we now have a contract and you're right, it's foundational for a lot of things. Uh, on the recruit large customers, I, I, I don't, I do not hold you responsible for recruiting. I applaud you for trying, but I don't think any of us should be trying to rate whether you were recruited. You can't control that. So it's great that you talk about it and.
In fact, it's not on the 2025 for that exact reason.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to be supportive as we possibly can.
Control whether somebody moves their company to the territory.
Good feedback.
And later, like when we talk about relationships with towns and also, you know, you're doing, you're, you're good at keeping in touch with the towns and, uh, but at the end of the day, it's not, you, you can't control whether a town does something or doesn't do something. It'll be something invisible to them.
Oh, yeah.
So getting back to customer communication, so there, there, you're right about AMI being foundational, but time of use rates do not require a new AMI system. I mean, we have time of view rates, time of use rates now, we have for many years. And we know when peaks are, we know when, uh, when we want to push load around. And there hasn't been any, uh, I don't think talk or, or we haven't heard about plans for revamping or broadening our time of use rates. To say that it's reliant on AMI, I think that's not quite right because, uh, again, we know when the peaks are happening. Uh, we know the current time of use rates are probably not optimal in that they do the peak from noon to seven. And really the peaks, I think, as you've said, are more like, I don't know, three to eight, four to eight. So.
Well, currently.
Currently.
That's going to change.
And it's going to change, right? And that, um, and that also the differential between the peak price and the off-peak price isn't really that much. Um, it could be more. So there's things that could be done with time of use and particularly commercial industrial where you do, you in fact do have an AMI system effectively for the forty percent of your load. So I guess what I'm saying is that there has not been any, so that I've seen that movement towards time of use changes, just, so I don't think they need to rely on, on the new AMI system. Um, so I, I would love, I've, you know, as a, as a time of use user myself, one of the 400 or 500 that there are, I've always wanted to see more time of use and, and pushing, pushing behavior a little bit that way. Uh, but it, it's not something that's, that's been happening. So I don't know if, I think we talked earlier today about, you know, whatever the next rate proposal would be, it sounded like it's just going to be another across the board. Um, it would be nice to think that even now, there could be flexibility to say, you know what, let's tweak time of use a little bit, even though we don't have AMI. Let's do the four to eight. Let's, let's.
Part with you, with you on that.
You know.
Good feedback. Good work. That's what we're trying to put together. Yeah.
Because that's that one.
Yeah.
Now, rmld.com, obviously it doesn't, it does not appear that the site has, has been revamped. And unfortunately, we have had, and, uh, Phil pointed out the letter is, there's actually a lot of, there has been a lot of outdated information on it. Like the solar choice program was still on there until some weeks ago. It's still a solar choice, uh, FAQ up there now. Um, and so I don't know, is, is the, no, no interest, no load? What's the no interest program, the weatherization thing? Is that a real?
No, it's a no interest loan program for heat pump and weatherization projects.
Okay. Is that on the website?
And as we haven't, we'll announce it in February. We're just, yeah, we're, we're, we're negotiated it. We had, we're with one of the local banks.
Okay.
Um, took the lessons from Mass Save.
So I don't, I don't think any of these, these types of customer interaction, customer communication, website revamping have actually happened. Um, and I know we had problems over the summer, the shred, the peak emails weren't going out because there was a problem, we hadn't paid the invoice and it was many weeks before that got fixed. So, uh, there was the issue of the customers still getting overcharged when they were paying extra for fifty percent non-carbon, even though we'd already reached fifty-five. And that got brought up by this same resident, um, Rebecca. And, uh, then you came back and had to refund people. So there's things, you know, I, I think there's, there has not been, uh, there's, there's a lot of work to do, be done, and the revamping of rmld.com, you know, did not occur. So hopefully that will change in the coming months. Um, so yeah, that's basically, yeah, that's, but that's my feedback. Thank you.
Yeah. The TOU, so it won't be just a straight across the board. Each one will be adjusted a little bit. Um, and we'll review all that stuff in the February meeting, but that does, uh, the encouragement to, to make adjustments between rate classes, um, we will do. And you'll see also in the 2025, we'll do a more comprehensive customer segmentation and characterization, and then a more comprehensive, um, uh, rate study, which we do every three to four years as well.
Yeah. And I just want to, Phil pointed out the letter that came in just today, that there's nothing about, um, like it's, the, the, the email address we don't have, that the, that the, uh, this customer's bill still doesn't, uh, promote renewable choice. The things like that, and they, they've been, we've been talking about these things for a bunch of months now. These would seem to be simple things to, to do to improve customer communications without a lot of, doesn't seem like it would take a lot of effort to just do it. So anyway.
Bob. Um, not a lot. I, I, I did like the new ideas from Mass Save. I think that's, I could incorporate, learn from others, right? I think that, that, that's actually, you know, working down. Um, you know, taking certain things that were out of the rebates that just weren't, yeah, logical anymore. Though sometimes you don't like them, you gotta, you gotta do them. So you, you, you did, you did well, um, streamlining that. I know there's a lot of people that are interested in weatherization. You know, we're not, we are not mass safe. You know, you know, can we ever be mass safe? So I think expectations are, are important in that as well. Um, Dave touched on time of use. I, I, you know, I just see that as a, it's, it's going to be something that's going to, um, we have some ability now, it's going to be new and it's going to be ever changing, um, over the next couple of years.
Awesome.
Um, not having someone in the, in the social media, marketing manager role, uh, definitely, you know, our, our website, our communications have been, have been slow again. I'm not going to repeat what, what, what Dave's, Dave said. Um, and, you know, talking, you know, we talked about the outage, you talked about the outage map and, um, the, the customer portal. Um, again, it, we're not going to be as, as, we don't have a lot of money and I, I understand that. So they're not going to be the bells and whistles on, on that. So I think, you know, uh, uh, understanding what people setting expectations, you can spend a lot of money on something that's not going to give you a lot of benefit. And, and I just want to make sure that, that focus stays, stays true on, on a lot of things that, that we do here. Um, you know, there, there, there's, there's certain, we could spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on things that have no, yes, they would work, be, be nice to have, but at the same time, picking up the old fashioned phone or cell phone can, can call in, does the same effectiveness and, and, you know, okay, maybe the map only exists on our website. I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, maybe we're not going to do, uh, an app. Maybe we're not going to do some, something else. It, it's just, there's a, there's a bang for your buck. And I just want to always make sure that, that we stay focused on, on, on that. Um, I, I do think you're doing a good job with, um, talking to other entities and, and staying on track um, with, with the other communities. And I, I do, I do, I do think that's important, but I also do think that that could be the role of others in, in your staff, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be you, you know, to be able to delegate people here to, to do those meetings as well, you know, and, 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 you know, let, let others be that person. I think that's also, uh, an important fact. And, um, yeah, and, and again, the energy efficiency programs, yeah, we'll, we'll, those are going to come, uh, based on that. Always an ever-changing, changing room. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good feedback. Thank you, Phil. Pam?
Yeah, um, last bit of that, I guess I might, I keep back with you, uh, kind of reiterating his voice, but, uh, responding completely to customer feedback. When we do identify issues, we want to be too slow to correct them. I think that hopefully, um, the, the new management team will, um, be able to get, uh, on top of those changes quickly. And then I think just looking ahead, you know, I, I think a few folks kind of talked about this or hinted at it, but there's clearly a lot changing at the federal level. Customers may have questions about what that means for what is available to them, or, you know, there may be a segment of customers who may, you know, what can I do individually to, to keep them on that note for its non-carbon and such. We want to be able to provide them with information on those options that's really clear and accessible for them. So they can make their own choices around what they want to do. Um, so as much as we can develop a really clear set of options for them, make that available. Um, you know, make it understand, understand, give them access to, you know, folks that have questions that they need to. To get feedback on this, I think. They'll get their feedback if they're right.
Thank you, Pam. Helpful. Thank you. Raymond?
Um, yeah. I think, uh, some good things here and, and some things we want to grow on. Um, streamline weatherization center programs. I'm glad we, we tweaked the numbers a little bit. Um, that's, that's always going to have to happen. Um, but I, I agree where um, heat pumps, EVs and the residential solar are still, um, incentives, we need to, to kind of pull out time of use. Um, and I agree with Dave's comments that we, we, we can take it in a, tweak it in a crude way, and, but AMI certainly is going to change the whole dynamic. So, um, looking forward to that rollout when, when it happens. The marketing, yeah, I mean, let's, there's just so much, um, get the webinars back. We need to promote stepwise. We need to promote Adobe. We need to get messaging, uh, network out with other groups, uh, writing climate advisory committee, town committees, uh, uh, whatever. Like-minded organizations in the other towns, um, let them echo, uh, whatever messaging we're trying to put out there. Um, is, and, and again, I, I think really, I want to second what Pam just said is your role isn't to do those things. It's to motivate and encourage and, and support your marketing manager to do those things.
Yeah, right.
And I, I met her. She's a great person and I, I'm sure she'll, um,
We're gonna, we're gonna add some staff to help.
Yeah.
Done too.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it's, it only happens to her capacity to do it.
Yep.
And, um, but I know she's, she's excited about the opportunities. Um, as far as industrial customers, uh, my only caution on that is we still need customers that aren't going to drive up our peak demand periods. I mean, whatever, whatever, whatever people come in, it's nice that they're creasing a base load, but they need to have a plan where when we get to the peaks that they, they have a plan.
Correct. I was with you on that one.
My only caution on that. Um, um, yeah, I, I think in general, the communication with town leadership is good. I think you have, um, you've certainly spoken to town leaders. Um, I've heard back from Matt and Jackie from the town of Reading. And I, oh yeah, Dr. Greg about this, this, though. Um, we're, we're making great progress in Killam, but I, I agree with David. Um, right now, our town manager is not the most, uh, uh, buoyant or, uh, exuberant person on this topic. So if the town doesn't push him, he's not likely to go very far. So, um, let's get Killam done. Let, let's get Killam done. Then we can go back and look at Parker. Um, but yeah, certainly there's green support, community support. Awesome. Um, and, um, let's keep the, the solar opportunities up there. Um, um, so, so yeah, I think again, looking in the past year, we, we fell down with some things, but I, I think we've got people in place to move forward. So, um, I'm, I'm more optimistic that the next year will go better than the past one.
Thanks, great. Platform, Dave?
Platform.
Right. So platform, um, the focus on platform, right, is, um, we, we talked, we already started talking about some of these elements, but it's basically to allow us to more efficiently support, um, electrification, which is driving load growth. As, um, there's a couple of you mentioned already, Phil, you know, there's changes at the federal level, which will have some impact. Um, but the other thing that we're staying, going back to the legislative, uh, and regulatory engagements that we're doing. We're trying to stay very close to them to make sure that we see how they see the world changing. Right now, they still see, they, they are still, um, on their same current path in terms of driving toward electrification and decarbonization. But we are actively updating our load forecast to say, what do we think a revised schedule might look like? So that's, that goes back to the load growth and knowing where that is. And as you guys know, load growth is a critical assumption. We're never going to get it perfectly. But we want to have it directionally correct and to the order, to the, agree that we can, the magnitude and the timing of that directional move as well. Cause that im- impacts our revenue, that impacts how much investment we need to make on the infrastructure, the timing of it, et cetera, et cetera. So on these, uh, OP and Q here, right? So we talked about the AMI vendor, right? We've established project milestones. As you can see there, right? Phase one is a 2025 event, phase two is a 2026 event. You'll see those in the goals as well. Um, one of the things that we did do and, and, uh, Dave, I know you know this firsthand, but we actually engaged in some third parties to, uh, help us, um, uh, properly manage the project. We only do AMI project, project once every 15 years. So it was appropriate for us to engage a, a team that helped us do this properly. Um, there were two from the RFP who went through a very arduous RFP process. There were two very strong candidates. We had four, as we talked about before. Anyway, so that's, we're feeling very good about the AMI project and equally importantly, the internal team is excited about it. And the, and most, not saying most importantly, and very encouraging is that the internal team wants to do it, um, quickly as opposed to have it. So some, some, um, AMI programs will last three or four or five years. Our goal is to get it done in eighteen months. Um, and there's a couple of, anyways, so that I think is going extremely well. Um, we talked about pursuing numerous land opportunities. We talked about that before. Uh, one of the key things that we talked about earlier, right? Back in, in May, we secured the approval to do a lease of the Lynnfield Water District. That required a lot of preparation, um, a lot of meetings, um, and, and getting the support, the vote support from the, uh, Lynnfield Water District themselves. We talked about Wilmington, North Reading, Venavento, the Winkland Power. Um, we've got a bunch of different angles in terms of land. You guys know intimately well, there is not a lot of land left in our territory. Um, there's, you know, the, the good parcels are all gone. Um, this scale of land acquisition, including Ash Street, um, is, is new to RMLD. You know, we did back in, uh, twenty twenty-two, the end of twenty twenty-two, really twenty-three, we did the three twenty-six Ballard Vale. But before that, the last time we did a land acquisition was in nineteen ninety-five. And Phil remembers he was instrumental in helping us get station three, which was the one sixty-six, um, property. So, so this is new territory for us. We've made good progress, but we need to accelerate. Um, we did do an RFP for the land, um, that's coming back in, um, in the early part of February. That's probably not the ideal. We tried it, um, again, to try and uncover additional opportunities. It is served primarily to let people know that we are in land acquisition mode, but I don't expect a lot to come out of that. Um, but anyways, there's a lot of effort in terms of pursuing land. Um, on, uh, on Q, in terms of the performance metrics, this goes back to a suggestion you guys made and Pam had made specifically. Um, you know, we, we are not, uh, we, we have not fully put in a dashboard. Um, what I have done is I've sat down and walked the team through, you know, what are the key metrics in terms of how the business works? What are the nature of the, you know, the key piece is to make sure that the difference. the key piece is to make sure that the different departments, IRD and engineering and IT and um, operations in particular, as well as the HR or the finance guys, but they understand together how the business operates. So as we pull these, um, dashboard metrics into place, we can make it happen. We didn't get it done in, um, 2025. Um, we made some progress, but didn't get it fully done, but it is a critical element. Um, and it, you'll see it as the goal for 2025. Um, the other element is, um, again, the internal metrics, uh, which I talked a few moments ago, but load forecast models are, they, they impact almost every part of our business. Cash flow, revenue, investment, hiring, et cetera, et cetera. So that's important. So that's a quick summary on, on platform. Feedback, uh, Phil?
I don't even know what to say here. You know? Well, like I say, it looks okay to me. I mean, that's best, that's I can say. So I'm going to pass that, pass that on.
Yeah, just real quick, because we've gone over some of these already.
Yeah.
Um, you've talked about the need for some kind of understanding of concrete milestones with the land acquisitions and what's realistic and, you know, not losing sight of the, uh, as Bob's, you know, has been saying of, you know, nuts and bolts, day-to-day stuff in, you know, while, while pursuing the big, the big, uh, the big dog, if you will. Um, and, and with the data analytics, it would be nice, not tonight, but at some point, what, what are these items? What business metrics and um, how has the load forecast been deepened? How is it different than what ENE gives us? Not tonight, but yeah, you know, you're referring to these things, but it's not, I don't know quite what it, what it refers to or how it adds value. Um, and with AMI, when we get, um, you know, obviously it produces a lot of data and the trick is to use the data. So that's goes back to, you know, we already have some, a lot of data coming in from industrial customers. So, but we weren't using it. So it's a question of using the data. Um, so that's it. Hopefully we can get clarity on some of these things. Yep. That's, that's what I have.
Uh, just real quick, uh, I, I liked it when Nick came in and, and discussed the, the project.
Yeah.
I'd like Nick to come in or when appropriate and, and
Peter come in on the substation, the two big projects for us, yeah.
Yeah. And, and just to give us updates on that, because it's, it, you know, those are the two big things that are going on, um, to do that and, uh, keep it quick. I'm, I'm good.
Pam? If, uh, if you're still with us.
I found.
Okay, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Right?
Um. Yeah, just repeating themes that I've had, uh, AMI managing load growth versus energy efficiency, supply side versus demand side. We need to keep both of those, um, opportunities in mind when we look at data and opportunities to, uh, leverage that data. Um, yeah, land, land is key. Um, it'll be generation and storage. Solar drives the solar choice programs. Um, battery storage, but also uh, land, yes, but area. That's going to be my, you're going to hear that more than once, Greg.
Uh, no, no, and that's part of the focus. I mean, that's part of the
Parking lots, yeah, they're expensive, but so is land. So let's get, get some stuff on parking lots. Um, and then I get the internal performance metrics, yeah, uh, peak power demand versus peak power supply. Those are independent variables now and, uh, we just need to understand how we manage them when the curves don't line up right.
Good. No, that's part of the equation. Great. Thank you all. All right. Um, funding? Funding, yep.
I'll be quick here.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, um, we, we made quite a bit of progress early in the year, um, through the second half of, you know, through the end of basically two Q 24, the first half of 2024. But once we paused the carbon capture fuel cell project, we basically paused any of the additional bonding stuff. We will need to look at bonding later on this year and into, um, likely 2026. Um, 2026, depending upon how fast we do our build out. Um, there, there might be a time where we will need to do some bonding, but it won't be till 2026, um, but the, so preparation, so um, the fact that we have our AAA lady rating is good. Um, we did several grants, you know, back to your earlier comment, um, Dave. Um, we did learn, um, how to do better grant applications, um, and for, and part of these early process, like the, uh, the first one, um, we actually, um, uh, you know, the ones that were not, uh, several of them, basically we ended up not getting to, we got to the first round, but didn't get to the second round. Um, and so part of it was, we could have done a better job with our applications. Part of it is, there was nothing awarded in New England area. I mean, there are different reasons for each one of them. Um, some of the smaller ones, right? S, well, they're all S, I'm sorry, but the second one's in the bottom, the cybersecurity one. Um, uh, we actually won that one. The last one, the EV charger grant submission, um, we were actually weren't well positioned for that, but it all got allocated to the city of Boston, all 5.1 million of it. Um, the third one down, um, which is the joint application with Form Energy. Um, this is one that we did later in the year. So we took the lessons we learned earlier on. Um, we were recommended by the, um, Mass CEC for 3 million out of the 9.2 million. So a big chunk of that grant dollars. Um, it's in DOE hands right now to award. Um, um, obviously, you know, there's still work to do on the form project. So we'll update you guys on the economics of the form energy piece. Um, that is a different type of storage system on a whole bunch of different pieces. We spent a lot of time um, in, uh, the spring of 2024, talking about that project. Uh, we have kept it moving forward because it is a storage project of a different nature. Um, our intention right now is to make an equity investment in it, but probably at half the scale that we were originally thinking about. Um, we'll give you more details on that, but that's an example, going back to your comment, Dave, of taking lessons learned and trying to make it a reality.
You're talking about Form Energy?
Yep, Form Energy, the three, and the $3 million out of the 9.3. We're actually looking for another 10 million, to be honest, um, in addition to 3 million, in addition to the IRA.
So you're, you're looking for, if you have a $3 million grant, uh, application to DOE, so he said?
Yeah, so it went through Mass CEC, Mass, Mass CEC. Um, out of the 9.2 million dollars that they were allocated, said we want to, we recommend that they have to get DOE approval. So they're recommending that three out of that 9.2 go to a Form RMLD project. That's it. It's, the good news is, we've learned, uh, how to do a better job in terms of position.
Well, if that's another huge project, uh, sorry, I made a cut in front of you.
You're, you're, um, me?
You're good. Yeah, sorry, go.
Okay, so
Don't be up.
The one thing that I see is, you know, the funding going for bonding. Um, if we can get to the EMWIC.
Yeah.
That may be a better route than go to the town meeting.
Yeah.
Cause I, you know, I've had experience of going to a front of town meeting and asking for, um, bonding. And people get up and say, well, what more are you going to give the town of Reading? That's why you're better off to get to EMWIC if you can do that.
We can. We have the option.
Yeah. As opposed to going to, to Reading Town Meeting, because they, they usually have their hand out, want, want something. When you go to town meeting, that's been the experience of the last, the two, the two bond issues of which I have presented, the town meeting. Okay, so even though we, you know, increase the above the line amount. You know, the
More than that, yeah, yeah.
You know, because you were doing more construction, therefore the above the line amount will increase.
Yep.
Um, you know, they'll, they usually want something, because it falls back to many people consider in town here that it's Reading's light department.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's, you know, you're never going to come, I don't know how you're ever going to overcome that with people. Um, you know, having fought that with a few times.
Good feedback on keeping the
I've at least fought that issue at least four different times in my time, in my time. Yeah. So, anyway, that's all I got.
So all that's good on the slide. So that's good stuff. Um, that's, that's my feedback.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, no, I just, uh, uh, the third smart grid monetization, the 30 million.
Yeah.
The Peabody, um,
Oh, yeah.
What, what's your in, in, informed date? Um, what's your, what's your next feedback cycle on that application?
On the one to Peabody?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I'm right above it, next to it. It was not awarded.
Oh, it's not. I did know that. It was a subset that
Yeah, no, we, we got invited back to the first part of the year, we resubmitted. Um, but none of those, all that, none of that money came to New England.
Yeah.
Uh, we had actually, that particular case, because we went back and took the lessons learned, we had a good pitch and we did it with another partner, which made it even more attractive. But nothing came, and that particular project, nothing came.
Yeah, I read that first, and that was, there was nothing, that, nothing around, yeah.
And that's, you know.
Yeah, uh, uh, grants, grants are always a little bit of a crap shoot. Um, try to just make smart choices and lessons learned from ones you don't win for, to ones you do. It's, um, I would continue to say,
Keep trying.
Keep trying, yeah. Um, it's, uh, you know, and, and partners, partnering with Peabody, um, or whatever, uh, partnering with Form. Um, you know, those, those are the
All comes another one.
And, uh, those are the success factors that, that kind of help you win those.
Yeah.
Um, so, so yeah, I'm, I encourage you to keep, keep chasing funding. I, I, I consider this, uh, uh, a good effort.
Great. Pam?
Yeah, nothing really bad.
Okay. All right.
Last but not least.
Personal favorite?
I love power.
Most power. I don't know. So power supply, right? Um, it's important for resiliency. It's important to manage process. We've talked about before and obviously we have a compliance obligation. Our compliance obligation is tied specifically to power supply. So as you guys know, right, we explored in territory generation PV, Ray. Um, RML, and, and as you recommended, right, RMLD, this is one of the many factors that you've looked at, right? Lynnfield Water, um, is continuing to have legs, Route 125 potentially has legs, Andover Street potentially has legs. We added four new PV projects to the 2025 budget. So there's a, the, the theme of the 2025 budget is solar PV. Um, you know, as you guys know, I know you guys commented earlier on the carbon capture fuel cell project to tie to base load. Um, uh, we made a lot of progress very, in, in a fairly short period of time. Um, but I think it was the, if I remember correctly, it was the discussion of the uh, potential of the IRA falling through. That was the key factor that decided for the subcommittee not to recommend it and the BOC uh, not to pursue it, but, um, a lot of lessons learned. Um, uh, a lot of good analysis went into it, um, including how we were going to do the bid, um, design build process. Um, uh, actual projects that got completed, Ray, um, Kirkwood Printing put a, put a 225, 224, um, KW, um, solar rate as part of our incentive program. Um, we presented to North Rain High School, Parker, Killam's and Process Senior Center. Parker, obviously the group decision with the town was let's pause that one and focus on Killam. Um, we developed two long-term storage partnerships. Um, uh, All Some Energy is a small project. We're doing a grant application with them right now. Um, and then there's the, you know, um, uh, 10 megawatt, 100 hours, sorry about that, 10 megawatt, 100 hour Form Energy project. Um, that's a very good partnership with them right now. And then the other element, uh, which is not part of the T through W, um, but in terms of actively managing the power supply, this was back in the February, uh, timeframe. We, uh, we actually secured a route, we got approval from you, presented, negotiated, but a rather large nuclear one that took us all the way through to 2050. And it's actually, it progresses as it goes out further, it gets larger. So that was a particularly strong piece. And then we are supposed to report on TFAs, but, um, the TFA program, um, we haven't done it, we haven't signed a TFA project in over three years and the last of the TAs are expiring. That was, that structure made a lot of sense at a time when, um, prices were not so volatile. Um, the TFA structure right now doesn't really work in today's environment of, of much more volatile prices. So anyways, that's the last piece on power supply. Power supply, again, back to, you know, somebody's asking about actively managed, uh, we, we spent a all of these pieces are part of it, including, um, contracts. Feedback, Dave, or Phil?
None.
None, okay.
None.
Uh, well, we've covered it already of just the need for understanding milestones and uh, what, what are the timetables and milestones and, and evidence of progress on, on the various ambitious land and generation projects? You mentioned the Kirkwood. That's a what, what, what was RMLD? That was an incentive to do rooftop solar?
Incentive rooftop solar.
Okay, yeah. So that's just the customer that wanted to do solar and you have an incentive. So is there any, is there any more active role RMLD took in that in terms of its?
Uh, we provided advice and sizing, et cetera. Um, but, um, you know, again, we encouraged it. That was part of it. So we were, we are part of the enabling factor that actually made it out.
Okay.
Dollars was a big piece of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that fits in with what Ray's point is of
More solar.
Area.
Area.
And was that?
So we didn't lease it, you know, it's, it's more stolen our territory.
Yeah.
Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I just, just kind of, kind of touches back in the vision, you know, I, I, I know we're rates and reliability. And looking at the projection of what's going to occur potentially in our next few years in the natural gas and oil environment. You know, I'd like you to think about and even propose, you know, right now we're retiring X amount of certificates, but in the open market purchase. You know, if gas prices are going to go down, that's beneficial to our MLD. I want to, I, I, you know, I, I, I know it's not the most green way to think. It's a very economical way to think for the next couple of years. And as, as things change, I'd like to be open to the idea of being, you know, if rates is our number, one of our number one components that we think
Which is the mission, yep.
Right. I, I just want to make sure that we're, even though when we can, unless we still pursue every non-carbon and every single one of these things on the page. But I also want to see a pursuant, us pursuing the cheapest rates that we can acquire and power supply contracts on the open market right now would allow us to do that, you know, a larger purchase of gas, gases available. Now, I, I don't know if this can be an, an option in the Northeast, right? It, it, it's very difficult already.
Yeah.
But, you know, as, as things progress and things change, um, maybe that's something that, that, but just don't, I just don't want to put it off the table, but I want to make sure that it is part of the power supply contract going forward and, and that impact, it's, it's so, I said it, I didn't say it in a very
We got it.
Nice play.
Yeah. Well, I remember, you know, part of our intention behind the carbon capture fuel cell project was actually to, to have a natural
Natural gas, correct.
Right?
Correct.
And again, the world has changed significantly in the past six months.
Yep.
Um, uh, again, we looked very carefully at natural gas and oil, but natural gas in particular, coming into the territ, into the region. Right? Because the view is right now, natural gas prices will eventually in two or three, whatever, at some point in time, they will start to decrease nationally. And ultimately somewhere in the 2030 range or beyond. Our, but right now, natural gas in New England is continuing to grow. Um, and the forecast right now, the energy forecast of 2030, 2032, it starts to decline. And so what I think we should, so I'm with you that part of our strategy is to have natural gas. Now, have, we have to deal with the carbon piece of it. But with the idea that that will eventually become less expensive and not be constrained like it is right now, that should be a bigger piece of our portfolio.
And it could be a lot sooner than, than you think, the price, price, right? And I just don't want to lose sight of that.
I'm with you. I, I, so
As a, as an energy supply.
So, so in two weeks, I'll, I'll talk about this on Wednesday, but you know, the, one of the people that, that we, that are very good in terms of looking at natural gas forecasts or the Next Era team. And so they used to come to us. So last February, I went down to a, a three-day conference. I'm going to go down again this February. I'll, I'll walk you through what the objective is, but I'll bring back specifics. I know natural gas prices and the forecast is going to be one of the topics. So uh, mission, mission heard, mission accepted in terms of thinking about natural gas in the portfolio going forward and, and so hitting compliance obligation.
One other item, while I look at that little RMLD logo, Phil's face would look perfect in a slight just doodling it.
We've got another plan for Phil's face.
And so I just want to make sure that we see those images of that. If there is going to be a change, Phil gets the play in the, in, in there too.
Thank you, Bob. Pam?
Yeah, um, I think everybody's saying a lot of great things on all of these, uh, not as part of Alex. Continue to, um, encourage us to explore all options. Um, I'd always be taking some of the things, lessons we learn from the, the carbon capture and just thinking through, you know, how do we make this these opportunities go well, but, but also what can go wrong and how to be risk. You know, given all of the changing things that are happening, um, and compliance that we have on other entities to, uh, to make some of these opportunities work. So, um, applaud the, the continued thinking across, uh, you know, kind of all of the above solutions to
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, yes, not much to add. Um, we're 80% leveraged. We've shown that that's good value. We're looking for in territory generation on the project you mentioned. That means we're 20%, 20% market rate, so find the best deals. Um, you know, just, they're going to be opportunities. We're going to go after another big scheme, carbon capture, fuel cell, space, laser powered, sun generated reflector. I'm not sure what, what we're going after, but Space laser powered sun generated reflector, I'm not sure what, what we're going after, but I, I think. Tying the Board of Commissioners, Clemented. Since, but Advisory Committees, the C A C. In a risk management support plan, I, I think that gives you the.
Great.
Plugs. A great resource into the, to the team and. Then helps identify risk and manage that piece, so. There'll be something out there that we'll, we'll want to go after.
We're not going to give up.
Yeah, I mean, you, you got it, you, you've got, you've got to sometimes be aggressive and. Just. Just understand that. That has risks and permitting and. But yeah, otherwise we're good.
Okay. Dave, I'm gonna jump to, you guys want to pass on, those are my ratings, you guys, you are going to comment, say it's verbal. I do want to talk about the last slide fourteen, right, so areas of improvement for twenty twenty five. So that first element, key metrics beyond the basic actual versus budget and dollars, you know, some basic stuff that you've been managing for a while. But what I'm really working on with the management team right now, and I've got a bunch of materials that, actually, we. We're reopening again tomorrow morning, but to really put together, I'll call it a first cut, but a much more. Reflective of how our business operates dashboard. And so it's going to help all the different departments understand the decisions that they make and how they affect the rest of the organization. Their cost trend lines, et cetera. You know, we talked about more effective internal and external communications. Past couple of years, we were doing pretty good on that. Last year. It wasn't as good. So I'm going to work diligently with myself, with the whole team to improve the communications. And then the last element there is, the goal is by the end of February to have all of my direct reports and encourage them. Which is the program that I'm working on with HR to get them all done in the first two months, so. Again, areas for improvement for twenty twenty five.
As your metric. Of. Reliably low cost, no carbon. Along with that. I would see areas for improvement with staff, training, communication. Training, communication and growth. Bring people on, tell them what they do, what they need to do, and your communication part is reviews. But, you know, this, the, the people are. Electrons don't go from here to the house without people.
That's why it's probably true.
A lot of stuff, so.
Completely.
Training, communication and growth is your, is your next three words after you say a reliable, low cost, low cost.
I think that feeds into, it's, we've, it's been a three hour meeting, and three hour meetings are brutal. So we should, we should, we should call it a night.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, thank you, Greg, and I think. You're on a start of like, helping flesh out the goals that we're going to keep looking to connect. And I also, you know, I think you should sleep on it, but consider that, you know, Greg gave numerals. That after letting all this bake, sleeping on it, all the comments and what Greg said and his responses, is consider coming back on Wednesday with our own. One to fives on these items. You know, we can, we can talk about it on Wednesday.
I don't want to, so let's, we got other bits, so happy to have it. I don't know another three hours out.
No, 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 it would be, it would be just like, what's the, when you wake up tomorrow, what's the distillation of all this and come in on Wednesday and talk about whether we want to offer that.
You just do one digit, I don't think two or three digits.
Well, he did a one to five each thing, only saying because.
Whatever you want to.
It was a mismatch.
Okay.
Let, let, let's talk about that on Wednesday. Do we need to add it to the agenda? Probably, just, well, it's in there already.
It's in there, yeah. Okay, one good shift. With that, Pam, thank you. I just moved her around.
Hi, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Commissioners adjourn the recording session.
Time to adjourn.
I heard you adjourned. Ms. Messino, I?
You gotta roll that way.
Great water, I. And I, okay, I, I, I.
Thank you, Pam. Good work.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Recording stopped.
My last, I have a chronology of each of our seats. From beginning to end, so I figure I may leave that with you.
Okay.
Before I disappear.
A chronology?
Yes.
Of the seat, same chairs, but thirty eight?
I can tell you who served before you. All the way back.
I thought you were going to propose a human sacrifice to the entire board.